Good evening. I'd like to open first a public hearing on the exemptions for qualified disabled residents. Ms. Figarella, could you explain that?
So, for those of you who were listening last time, we did have a discussion about the different types of exemptions that are available to on school taxes in Putnam Valley. And we adopted the senior, or it's known as the aged all exemption. There was discussion about the disability exemption because it normally goes hand in hand. It's the same scale as the aged all exemption, except the people who are eligible for the aged all exemption cannot have both of these exemptions. So, the disabled exemption is in place right now. It's just in place on a different scale. So, we would like to present the fact that the state has allowed the scales to be adopted as well at the same levels. So, I want to go over the scale again with everybody. I'm just going back to where the scale is, I'm sorry. So, you can see it. So, again, it would be, it's at the level that you see on the left side, and it would be moving to the level of income on the right side if it were to be adopted this evening. And it would be the same as the aged all exemption that exists, that we adopted last time at the last meeting. And that's what the consideration is for tonight. And we have currently nine people who received this exemption. It would shift about $300,000 to the taxpayers who are not disabled, let's say, or not eligible for disability. And it's about eight cents per $1,000 of assessment. So, that's the consideration that you need to have tonight.
And the change with this is incremental steps?
Yes.
Yes. So, this first level of change, which is where it says year one there, so it ranges from income of $40,000 to $48,399. And then in year two, it's, I'm sorry, am I looking at this right? Yeah, the Mac, I'm sorry. And the minimum income in year two would be $45,000, I mean, yes, the minimum, at 50% discount, and then up to $53,399. And in year three, up to $50,000, would have the 50% discount, and as low as 5% at $58,399. So, that's what would happen over the next three years, and then that would remain in place for as long as, you know, it was in effect. Yeah, that the governor would leave that in effect.
And again, they have to apply every year, right?
Yes.
So, when they applied this year, they would know the new guy?
So, they had to apply by yesterday.
Okay.
So, in January, the assessor's office notifies everyone, if they were entitled to it last year, that they need to reapply. And I guess they put out, I don't know what kind of announcement they put out for new people coming on that might be eligible for it, but we do not, as a school district, handle those applications. We simply apply it to the school tax bill once they adjust the tax rolls. But as the school district and the town, they have two different sets of tax rolls because there are different exemptions and different assessments for both of those. The town, the county, and then the school is separate. But we're allowed to apply those exemptions. So, if we adopt those exemptions, we can apply them to school taxes where they apply them to town and county taxes.
Okay.
So, they've had to apply for it by yesterday. That's the normal procedure. It's been in effect for, I don't, I couldn't tell you how many years.
But if they didn't apply because they didn't think they qualified, but now they would qualify?
No, this would be, yeah, well, these scales are being adopted so that maybe some others would be able to be qualified. Yes, that's true. Except if they didn't think they would, you know, like, we can't control that. If there is a scale in place right now, so if they applied based on that scale, then they have an application in, right? But then they may get a greater discount if they apply, if these scales get applied, right? But if they didn't apply, well, then they're out of luck till next year because they would have had to apply for the other scale anyway.
Okay.
If that makes sense, right?
Yep, I got it.
Takeaway is just ask the assessor to backdate your application.
Well, no, I don't think that that's something we want to, but, you know, if they had to apply for it by yesterday, that's the deadline. You know, it's like anything else. It's like April 15th, you know, you have to apply for it, and if you don't, you may be out of luck until the next time around.
Right.
Yeah.
And this is consistent with the town?
This is consistent with the town and county. It's consistent with two other school districts in the, in the our county, let's say. A couple of the school districts did not change. But they also did not change the aged all exemption either. So, like I said, this normally is the same as the aged all in most town counties and schools. So, when they decide to make a switch, they will probably do the same thing.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you. Are there any public comments on the disabled property owner amendment? Okay, then I think we'll close that discussion, and we'll restart our work session business meeting, which we started at 6:00, and then went into an executive session, came out of the executive session, so now we are back at our work session business meeting, and we're going to stand for the pledge. It is being done by Ms. Canous, fourth grade class.
Mrs. Canous, fourth grade. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well done. Thank you, Mrs. Canous, fourth graders. I loved all the Post-its behind them. Where was Margaret? That was her thing. Okay. I'd like to open it up for public comment on the agenda, on any agenda item. Okay, so there doesn't seem to be public comment, so I'd like to begin with item number one of the consent agenda.
Resolved to approve the consent agenda items two through 12 presented to the board at this meeting. Second?
Questions or comments? Mrs. Bellino, thank you.
The agenda items include approval of the previous meeting's minutes, approval of an updated substitute salary schedule, which will become in effect on March 13, and will be on the district's website, approval of an updated 2223 substitute listing, approve and amend additional hours for staff members, approve unpaid time for staff members, approve superintendent of schools attending a conference in Albany, the New York State School Superintendent's Winter Institute, approval to enter into an agreement with Constellation Energy Services, our electricity supplier, approve an overnight trip for the athletic team. The cheerleading team is going to the New York State Championships. They actually left today in Binghamton, New York. We are appointing the middle years program instructional specialist for the 2324 school year, which is Stephanie Trichalla and Mary Kay Cohen, and some additional hours for this school year from now until June. We're approving the 2223 spring coaching recommendations and approval for the CSC CPSC placements.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolutions pass. I'd like a motion to move from the reports to the new business action item and do item number one. Is that, is that a?
Second?
Okay. Comments? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, Mr. Oliverio, would you read number one, please?
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Melissa Estrada, who possesses a school district leader professional certification as a special education supervisor, effective March 2, 2023, with a four-year probationary term March 1, 2027, and a 10-year area special education supervisor at the annual salary rate of $143,000 pro-rated with all other terms and conditions of employment to be consistent with the Putnam Valley Administrators Association collectively negotiated agreement.
Second? Questions or comments?
I just want to note that Mrs. Estrada is here this evening, joined by three of her teacher colleagues. Mrs. Estrada has been in the district office, working as the CSC chairperson for several years now, and has really become an essential member of our team, and we very much welcome her to this new administrative role, which will allow her to continue to grow within our district while still servicing the students that she works with every day. So, I don't know if you have anything you want to add? Not to put you on the spot.
I've worked with Melissa now, Mrs. Estrada, for several years, and being a CSC chairperson is really quite a difficult position in the district, and she works so well with our faculty, and parents are just constantly really giving me positive feedback about how fair she is and that she listens well, she can run a great meeting, which she does seamlessly. So, I'm just so proud of her and really looking forward to her becoming part of the administrative team.
Outstanding.
Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes.
I thought you were going to walk up to the mic. She's a natural speaker.
Congratulations.
You guys want to come up and say anything?
Shy, look how shy.
Carrie's like, I don't mind talking in front of a mic. Thank you again for taking the time to come out and support Melissa. So, thank you.
That was nice. Okay, we don't have students here to give their report, but I'm going to let the superintendent do his report, and hopefully he'll cover some of the stuff that they would have covered.
I'll do my best. They always do a better job. All right, let me start off by saying we had a snow day. The first one of the year, I know. It happened so late in the year that people were hoping it didn't happen because they'd rather the days around Memorial Day, but we had a snow day, and I had to find a shovel at my house somewhere. But no, it was very nice to have the time to be home and be with the kids and actually have a significant snowfall, so. Some of the events that have taken place, we had our middle years program at the middle school. It was very well attended by parents. I was actually very happy to see the number of parents that came out to hear a little bit about the middle years program. Ms. Levine, Mr. McCarthy, and Ms. Zeca led the session, and I think it was very well received by all in attendance. I know many of the board members were there, as well as several administrators, and it's great to see the amount of support that program's getting as it gets started. Our elementary school, very similarly, had their scholastic literacy evening, so some of our teachers had come in and led sessions for parents, instructing them how their children are instructed each day, learning a lot about the program, and getting a chance to see the culture of our elementary school. So, again, thank you to everyone, Dr. Podesta, Jen, the teachers who came in, everyone who made that all possible, and again, Ms. Levine for helping to organize that evening as well, which was also very well attended, although I think there was many pizzas left afterwards. At our high school, we had our spotlight ceremony earlier this week, so an opportunity for teachers to give out awards or recognize students for myriad of reasons, not necessarily academic in nature, but many based upon character traits, empathy, resiliency, just being able to overcome challenges. So, it's something that started many years ago, and it's really a highlight here at the high school, to see our teachers recognize students for things other than maybe having the highest average in the class. And our TriM Music Honor Society had their induction ceremony earlier this week as well. We had some meetings. Our admin meeting took place early last week. Everything's all mixed up because there was a break in the middle. And I have the opportunity to attend New York State Council of School Superintendents Conference up in always sunny Albany, so I'm looking forward to that. It'll probably snow, sleet, and rain while I'm there. Our collective bargaining continues, CSCA. We met with the attorney, and we're finalizing an MOU, and we're getting close to the point where they'll be able to ratify their contract, and we have our next mediation session with the teachers' union scheduled for March 16. So, I hope we continue to approach an agreement and get that resolved as soon as possible. As we've discussed at previous meetings, the Putnam Valley Library has, I don't want to say proposed, because I haven't proposed, they have notified the district that they will be placing a proposition on our ballot, as is their legal right to do so. So, stay tuned for more information on that, but that is now, what we believe will happen, is that the town library will place a proposition on the school budget. There's no relationship between the two. It doesn't go into the school tax levy, but it is a taxable expense for the taxpayers of Putnam Valley and those in Cortland who attend Putnam Valley schools. Some upcoming events, our superintendent's council was rescheduled from the snow day to March 9. We have a listening hour coming up prior to the next board meeting on March 16. And our middle school musical, The Lion King, is scheduled to take place on March 10 and 11, with a sneak preview for faculty and staff on the 8th and 9th. Sports-wise, there's many things going on. Our boys' basketball team won their first game in sectionals before unfortunately losing. Our girls are entering the sectional finals. That game is on Saturday at 5:15 at the county center. We had several wrestlers go to the state tournament, Eswar Donas, as well as Taylor Rogers and Joan Demetriouls. I know Gabby Rendazzo is leaving tomorrow, I believe, for the states for track and field. And our cheerleading team, as we had mentioned, had won their sectional title and left today for the state tournament, so I hope I didn't leave anyone out.
Gabe, Gabe Rizwicky, didn't he, didn't they have?
Oh, swimming, right. Gabe Rizwicky went to states for swimming as well. And that's it. Thank you.
Just to kind of add, the middle years program that you had for parents, a lot of really good questions. I think the hard part is going to be slowing them down, because they won it yesterday. They were, it was, you know, the enthusiasm of the presenters was clear and kind of got the parents excited, so that's always a good thing. The TriM Music Honor Society induction was really good. The student speeches were amazing, and I think of, you know, 16, 17-year-olds writing, how music has, how it entered and affected their life was really pretty awe-inspiring. And then Tony Rush, class of 2007, I think, talked about his time in Putnam Valley and how music has helped him as he served our country in the Navy, which was really, it was really interesting, and he had some great pictures. But it was, again, a positive and joyous occasion, so it was really good, nice. Okay, presentations. We're going to start with the budget presentation. Best.
Pureing out the room, it's the best.
They just wanted to hang after my report before, heading for the hills before the budget.
It's so awesome they can't handle.
All right, thank you, and good evening again. So, this evening, we have the opportunity to take a first look at our proposed budget for the 2324 school year, and this is a presentation that'll be shared, again, certainly on the 16th and possibly even at future dates, and will be tweaked accordingly based upon the feedback we receive, as this is shared in public in a variety of ways, both at public board meetings, as well as listening hours and other budget Q and A sessions as we move forward. I do want to take this opportunity to thank my administrative colleagues for their work in making this all possible, and especially the work of the members of our business office and our business official Jill Figarella. Sorry, I transitioned through. One more. So, as is the case every year, we work to build a budget that's designed to intertwine our mission, our vision, and the goals of our district, and always seeking to find a balance between the sooner student-centered instruction that we know works best, especially here in Putnam Valley, and the financial needs of our community. Some of the goals of this budget and previous year's budget are outlined on this slide. The first being a multi-tiered system of support, MTSS, which is really a whole child support system, providing both academic and social-emotional support for children as they need. One of the goals we had this year, and, sorry, this year and next year, is communication. There's been a tremendous amount of outreach that has occurred over the past year, both through electronic newsletters, print newsletters, curriculum instruction newsletters, HR newsletters, a variety of parent engagement evenings, re-establishment of building steering committees. Really, any way we think we can further engage the community and empower them with information to be part of the process and to help our schools thrive is certainly all things, and a great deal of credit for all of those initiatives goes to Ms. Levine for her work in making that all happen. Professional learning has been a focus of ours this year, and we've seen a tremendous growth in the number of workshops that we offer here in-house. So, rather than teachers or teaching assistants going out of district to receive training, we are utilizing our own skilled staff to provide a wide range of training opportunities for our students. Both administrative and teacher colleagues are facilitating those training sessions, and thus far have been very well attended. And innovative programming, I think we've heard a lot about the scholastic program, as well as guided reading at the elementary school, new initiatives, student-centered, that are off to a tremendous start. The middle years program receiving our candidacy and beginning that process at the middle school, and obviously the continuation of the diploma program at the high school as they approach their reevaluation process and begin exploring their own implementation of the middle years program. So, a quick overview of who we serve. So, the elementary school, this is obviously an estimate because we don't know exactly how many students will be coming into kindergarten. We're estimating 549 students at the elementary school, 435 students at the middle school, and 503 students at the high school, and I'll break that down on the next slides. So, here at the elementary school, you'll notice, for the first time in many years, an interesting trend that from '21, '22 to '22, '23, we actually saw an increase in enrollment. It's been several years since we've seen that. And then while we remain four students below last year, we're still registering kindergarten students, so right now we currently have 75 students registered for kindergarten. We expect that number to increase, and I expect that number to surpass the 553 of last year. So, certainly a positive trend we wanted to see regarding enrollment, and more and more families and students coming to Putnam Valley to take advantage of our school system. Our middle school enrollment, you'll notice a significant decrease as a class of 125 students left to go to the high school, and sort of that anomaly class of 81 students coming into fifth grade. So, that's a very unique class. You'll notice the classes that follow the 81 students at the elementary school are much more consistent in terms of their size. In fact, the following class is 132 students. So, we know that those numbers will drop right back up as that one small class moves through our middle school. And at the high school, we'll have 503 students. The interesting fact on this slide is this is the first year we're welcoming Garrison students who are being tuitioned into Putnam Valley, so we expect six students at this time to be here next year as the first year, and hopefully many more in future years. Those six students will continue, move up through 10th, 11th, and 12th grade, and hopefully each year we welcome in a new cohort of students from Garrison. This slide highlights some of the driving factors that we had to consider in the preparation of this year's budget. The first being contractual salaries and benefits. Now, this represents both the fact that the PVFT, the teachers' union, is currently without a contract, and the CSCA union's contract is up at the end of this year. So, those represent unknowns for us. Currently, salaries and benefits account for 60% of our overall budget, so that's a tremendous amount of money that is, still remains variable. We're not exactly sure what that will mean for the district as we complete our budget, and therefore, we're doing our best to estimate what those expenses may be for next year. The next item I wanted to highlight is employee and retiree healthcare. We've seen a tremendous increase in healthcare, both pre and post COVID. Percentage increases sometimes nearing almost 20% a year as the district struggles to find a way to support those increased expenses. That's certainly an expense that's very difficult for us to account for in each year's budget. The next is vendor contracts and services. With inflation where it is, we've seen an increase in the cost of service contracts, as well as vendors, and also an increase in our utilities, our water, our oil at the elementary school, and our electricity in all our buildings. So, each of those together accounts for about 21% of our overall budget, and again, costs are very variable. The last one I want to talk about is transportation. While we have a consistent transportation contract with our vendor, we continue to struggle to find our own drivers to replace drivers who retire. That requires us to outsource. Many runs that were once covered by Putnam Valley drivers are being outsourced to our contractor, and each of those represents a certain increase in cost, as well as the overall increase in cost of gasoline as we see the price of utilities increase. All right, there's a lot on this slide. So, this slide represents two different facets of our healthcare. The dark columns represent, or all the columns represent, the total cost of healthcare, and total cost includes all employees. This is not specific to any one bargaining unit or individual. This is collective as a school district, what we spend in health costs. The dark columns represent known costs, so that's eight this year, as going back eight years to 2015, 16. And you can see in 2015, 16, our costs for health insurance were a little over $4 million, and we estimate this year our costs to be a little bit over $6.6 million. So, that represents a 66% increase in health costs over the last eight years. It's also interesting to note, if you just look at the four years pre-COVID, there was a 30% increase in the years before COVID. So, half of that 66% occurred before COVID. I know everyone believes that COVID is the driving factor behind increased healthcare costs, but I think this chart shows that healthcare was already on the rise well before COVID came and all those COVID expenses hit. The light-colored columns represent our estimated or projected health costs as we move forward. The lines, the red line on the bottom represents the amount we spend each year on retiree health costs. The green line represents the amount we spend each year on active employee health costs, and the pink line on the top represents the trend line as to the trajectory that we're on moving forward. So, as we project out the next 10 years, I simply use the average of the previous eight. So, the yearly average of the previous eight years was 7.4% increase each year. So, if we continue those projections out for the next 10 years, that will bring our spending from $6.6 million this year up to an estimated $13.6 million 10 years from now, and that represents a 104% increase in our healthcare cost for the district. So, this slide is meant to represent the ways in which we're trying to bridge the gap between each of our buildings. It identifies some initiatives designed to do that. So, as I mentioned before, MTSS, or multi-tiered systems of support, is meant to support the whole child. It's a district-wide initiative, offering students academic, emotional, social support needed to ensure that they're successful. to ensure that they're successful. We've done a tremendous amount of work regarding the establishment of core values and the sharing or learning about the learner profile. And these are used to create common framework or common words for all students that we want students to achieve towards. So this is already well-known in the high school. We're working on implementation in the middle school. And certainly, the elementary school, we're embedding those words as well as to attributes and values we want to see in our students. For curricular support, we're finding ways to bridge curriculum between each building to ensure that standards are met and that students have a seamless transition from one grade level to the next and from one building on to the next. And instructional practices are really finding ways to embed student-centered or authentic learning experiences into all of our classrooms. We think the diploma program at the high school is a model for this. We think that the implementation of the middle years program at the middle school will follow that same suit. And we believe that the changes we've made at the elementary school with the scholastic and the guided reading and our science lab and all the other initiatives and programs we have going there provide students those same opportunities for authentic learning within our instructional practices. On that note, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Figarella to talk about all the numbers.
Thank you. So just a few words about, you know, our lead-in to budgeting process. And just to make it clear that, you know, our budgets are always estimates. And they're based on an analysis of, you know, prior periods, what we see in revenues and expenses for trends, and then we apply them to a future period of time. And then we keep reevaluating them on a periodic basis. I mean, we've met in December, we spoke about, you know, looking forward, future, you know, five-year plans and whatnot. So I think it's important to mention that the basis of our budgeting is not only in the current year and in the next year, but in many years going forward, you know? So we meet, we have departmental meetings to discuss our needs. We try to prioritize our funding based on those meetings. We incorporate a lot of those projections and establish whether or not they're feasible for everyone. And then we hold these public meetings, right, to discuss our basis for those budget allowances. In fact, we're having a public meeting together, you know, I don't want to say it's a public meeting. I shouldn't say that because it's not an official board meeting, but it's a meeting with parents and taxpayers, community members, to discuss any concerns or questions they have about the budget. And our first one is going to be on, and excuse me, I believe it's next Thursday? It's Wednesday, March 8th, and it'll be at the Putnam Valley Middle School at 1:30. So it gives an opportunity for those people who can't make it in the evening or to these meetings to come out and speak with us and ask questions and get the answers that they're looking for. So our '23-'24 projected revenues for the coming year are $58,465,535. And we get that through the means of state aid. Those are state funds that supplement our budget, right, for our students and our buildings and our transportation needs. And we also get revenue from our local sources. So of course, that comes from our school taxes, some tuitions. And Dr. Love mentioned that we have some tuitioning in students from Garrison this year, so that will help us out with some revenue there. We have interest earnings, which I'm happy to say are doing much better than they were doing last year. So we have a bit of a higher projection there than we would normally, you know, than we have had last year and the last couple of years. We have inter-fund transfers, which is money that we're bringing into the budget for the purposes of this time particularly specifically to repair and replace the roof on the high school. And we also have some refunds that come from BOSI's. You know, we expense some monies and then we get some monies back from them. So those are some of our local sources of revenue that add to the state aid. And then we also have, excuse me, we have reserves to use. We are not using any of those operating fund reserves. So we have reserves within our general operating fund. And we also have reserves that are in a cap, our debt service fund. So the local sources would be where we get those inter-fund transfers, where the reserves that I speak of on the right are, those are from the general operating fund. We won't be using or we're not projecting to have to use any of those reserves this time around. And now we have, I'll talk about the budgeted expenditures by department. So we'll have a budget for our instructional area of the budget, which provides, you know, mandated instruction plus enhanced learning opportunities for all students K through 12. We have our special education expenditures, you know, where we identify and address special education needs and their academics and their emotional needs. We have our student services throughout the district, providing social and emotional support also, as well as guidance and therapeutic services for K through 12. Our athletics provide healthy lifestyle choices for all students through health and physical education and athletics. Then we have our transportation, which provides our home-to-school and after-school activities, our specialized student transportation to their schools, general support, which covers our district leadership and business administration associated with running the school district. As Dr. Love mentioned, our benefits is a very, you know, large area of our budget. Right now, we can say that the health costs have impacted us, you know, greatly in the last couple of years and have impacted the increases in the budget. They cover our fringe benefits associated with all of our employment contracts. And then we have central services, which maintains our facilities and infrastructure and while planning for any of our future capital needs. As described by the New York State Comptroller's Office, we need to explain what, how the budget breaks down into three-part components. And one is, the first one being the program, which is the largest, of course. 74.8% of our budget is dedicated to program. Capital expenditure is 14.7%, and administration 10.5%. This is how it all breaks down. This is our '23-'24 proposed budget appropriations. Okay, so in the, you'll see at the top there, we have our instruction and student services are the, one of the largest parts of our budget, the largest part of our budget. And it's going from $16.8 million to $18.1, a 7.5% increase. And you can see special education going up about 2.9% or almost 3%. Instructional media, $1.5 million at 5.6% of our budget. Pupil services and athletics, $4.1 million at almost 3.5% of our budget. Transportation, $3.5 million, that's about almost 7% of our budget. The general support, which I said is our district administration, legal, services, insurance, 7.6%. Central services, which provides the operations and maintenance to our facilities, it's 5.5 to 6%. Employee benefits, 7%. And debt service and inter-fund transfers contributing to the budget. They've actually decreased this year because last year, we had other projects that we were planning and we had our influx of federal funds. So if you remember, we, you know, kind of were able to do any, some of our capital expenditures and brought money in to the capital fund to fund those transfers. And we were able to do that in a year where we received funds to support some of the program and, which were paid for with those grants that came from the federal funds. So the number was much higher last year than it is this year.
Jill, can I interrupt real quick?
Sure.
And majority of these are contractual increases, correct?
What's that, I'm sorry?
Are contractual increases?
Are contractual increases as far as what types of contracts? Are vendor contracts?
Yeah, for example, transportation.
So they're all, they're all with, in this, in this display of expenditures, I would say our contractual services are really throughout those categories, right? Because in special education, we have contractors. In our regular general education, we have contracts. We have our, we have our employment contracts, but we also have vendor contracts that support with materials and supplies. So contractors are really throughout that entire, throughout all of the numbers that are indicated up there.
But increases due to contractual increases?
As far as the salaries go? So, okay, I understand your question, I'm sorry. So there are, yes, there are reflected salary increases throughout the instructional and student services for teaching. It does not reflect the contractual, there's nothing negotiated for teachers right now. So it doesn't reflect that. It reflects only what we consider, what we call tri-borough, which is the increase from one step to the next. This is the revenue broken down into different categories. So we have our state aid coming in at $15.9 million, which the foundation aid has been fully restored to the district. And last year, it was, also, they, I forget what the percentage was last year that we got, but now we are fully restored. So it's 15.2% increase for state aid because of that. Our local revenues are $635,000. Our transfers in from debt service, that was the, for the roof that I spoke about, $1.5 million. The $50,000 that you see there, that is from a prior project that was, a construction project that had ended. And when the project ends, if there's any revenue either from interest earnings or whatnot from the funding that we had, that money has to be brought back into the general fund to support some of the debt service that we have. It cannot be spent in any other way. So that's why it's 1.550. The school taxes will, are proposed at $40.3, $40.3 million. And that's 2.45%. Our allowable cap is actually 2.5%, but we were able to support the budget with 2.5, 4.5%.
Why not go to the 2.5?
Well, we certainly could.
Let me share a story if I could, a very quick story. I was county legislator for District Number Two for 18 years up at the county. And the early 2000s, every time we had the budget, Bob Bondi, the county executive, would come in with a 0% increase because he said it looked good. And I would always advocate, go to 2% or 3%. Use that money, put it into reserves. I was voted down at every time. But I'm on record stating this, for seven consecutive years. 2008, the Great Recession occurred. The following year, we raised taxes 22%. The following year after that, 19%. And we settled finally with a 9.9% the third year. Almost, if you add those figures, a 40% increase because we had no reserves, because we kept our budget artificially low. If the cap is 2.5, I think that .05 should be included. And that's my own personal opinion. I think it's very important that we rebuild our reserves because we have been pulling money out of that reserves every single year. And I've been following the budget. Now, this year, we're not doing that, which I think is excellent. You know, God bless you, whatever form of you work, and I love that. We're not touching the reserves. But let's add the $20,000 to that reserve by just adding that .05. Make it a 2.5 because that, that's what the state allows.
I know what you're saying. It's not much of a difference, but, and any amount that we leave on the table, so to speak, ends up coming back to us doubly next year and tripled the following and so forth.
Right.
If I were the only one making that decision, that might, but I can tell you that we needed this amount to get to where we needed to get, right? So I try to keep as much
And I applaud you for that.
From affecting the taxpayers as I possibly can.
I do, and I applaud you for that because it's a good budget, especially when inflation, as I've said before, is raging above 6%. But that .05 will help us in years to come. And it's a multiplier effect. The longer you have it in a bank, the more interest you gain and, you know, the reserve is there then. I, I'm so leery of, you know, rating the piggy bank year after year. And if we have an opportunity to add a little bit to it, I think we should. Especially, the state sets our cap, and we have suffered under this cap for, since they instituted the program. Let's use it to our advantage now, 2.5 is the cap. I mean, that's my recommendation, I hope the board follows me on it.
So this is the first meeting that we're having about the budget tonight. And it's certainly up for discussion, anything that we talk about. So this is for the board to discuss.
Thank you.
I just wanted, sorry, to talk a little more about the reserves.
Because I agree wholeheartedly. I think we have been over-reliant on our reserves for many years just to balance our budget. And I think in the state, who finally realized that shorting districts their foundation aid is really a back payment for all of the times that we've had to reach into our reserves to balance our budget. And I remember at one point, Jill and I were going around doing presentations where we had expended 33% of our reserves over a five-year period. And it's taken a tremendous amount of time and energy just to stop that bleed of our reserves. And those are original projections, I think 27, 28 was when we were originally projecting we would run out of reserves. And then you have no choice but to seek a supermajority vote, which is certainly something we don't want to hold off on for as long as humanly possible. So you can see over the last two years, how as the state has implemented or phased in, the foundation aid has removed our reliance on the reserves to balance our budget. And this is the first time, and Jill knows way better than I, but certainly the first time since I've been here where we're not forced to use fund balance or reserves to balance our budget. And what that does is it opens up tremendous opportunities for us to use that fund balance or the debt service for things that it was intended to be used for, which is supporting projects and having money available for a recession and being able to support those unexpected expenses that may occur at any time. So I do want to acknowledge that it's the increase in foundation aid, which is really a back payment for all the years in which we didn't receive the money we should have, that has finally allowed us to remove our dependence on the reserves and actually balance a budget with the revenues that are coming in.
Well, and I, I'm also glad to know that we're not using our reserves. And I, but I think that we've tried every year to come in just under the tax cap. Almost as a, okay, the state says you can have this much, but we're going to be really good stewards and not, not go to zero, not say, okay, we're going to continue to use our reserves and we're going to, and so our budget to budget is, or our tax impact is zero or one, which would be irresponsible. But, but I do think that it's a, it's a good thing to be a little, just a little, under the cap.
For what reason do you believe that?
Because I think it looks like we're trying
But we're not here for declarations. We're here for good financial progress and progressions.
Yeah, but we've got to get people to support the budget.
And I think they would. This is the tax cap, we're doing the tax cap. I mean, the state created this. There was a time, school budgets came in anywhere from 5% to 10% a year. And that was not that long ago, prior to this tax cap. That's why they implemented it, because districts were just putting it out there, 6%, 7%. Our own district did that for many times, well above 5%. Here, the state establishes a tax cap that we have suffered under, especially without the foundation aid. Finally, they realized the flaw of their ways and they're giving us the foundation aid. But they're also saying, we're raising the tax cap because inflation is ripping up this economy. So we're allowing the district, instead of stopping you at 2%, we're going to go to 2.5%. That will help you, and I believe we should accept that help. Again, that's my own opinion.
So the, just, I don't want to interrupt, but I just want to say that the tax cap is a, is a calculation for every school district, and it can be above two. Doesn't have to be two, it can be three, four, or five, and six, depending on what school district you're in. It's really driven by a couple of things. And for us, we don't have any what they call pilots. Those are related to taxes. We don't have that. We're not in a commercial base, school district where there's commercial property that affects those districts more than it would here.
Do we still get any pilot from Farnstock Park?
No, well, it's not called a pilot, payments in lieu of taxes. That's what it stands for. No, it is, that is No, it is, that is state land, and we do get, for Farnstock Park, we do get a-
We do get a little bit.
A distribution for that. It's not anything near what we would get if it were, but it, it's a beautiful part of Putnam Valley, right? So, we do get some money for that. We, what I was going to say is there are a couple of factors that drive that tax cap, and none of which are, can be applied other than our debt service. So, anytime our debt service and building aid change, that's what we can apply to the increase because that's what we're supporting, the infrastructure of the building. Only if the pension plans go up in over two percent increases can we add the diff, can we add that to our tax cap. So, we're really only raising it to stay under the cap or stay within the cap only by the debt service. So, for every district, that number can be, Sam, more than two. That's why I just, I wanted to interrupt and say that to you because it's not two and a half for everybody. It depends on who you are.
No, no, I, I, just our district, and I know that's applicable to just Putnam Valley, right? Right? But I, I think if they're giving us two, two and a half percent to allow us to do it, that perhaps we should take them up on that.
Right, in fact, they've capped the CPI at two percent, so even though the inflation is over eight, we can only increase whatever during our calculation by the two percent. So, they're not even really allowing us to go where we need to.
Well, historically, I don't know that the school district, at least in my memory, has put forth a budget that, with the anticipation of money going to the reserve. It's essentially-
We have not budgeted that way.
Because we, we've had to go the other way, even, you know, twelve years ago. I, I, I just, number one, we have to make sure that we're, we can't budget for an excess of four percent into, into those reserves. So, I don't know where those, that number is right now based on these numbers, now that, that, that we're not using reserve. And, you know, at the end of the year, it's not uncommon for us to have to make changes in accounts because of whatever data didn't get spent over the course of the previous year. And then, obviously, we couldn't have four percent, and we'd have to spend that money on something or put it somewhere. Was it turning to what, fifty thousand dollars, is that, or not even?
Twenty, twenty thousand, it comes to twenty thousand. It, it's, it's not a great deal, but it, it certainly can be used for whatever project. And, and there are a lot of capital projects that we've discussed, you know, from, I mean, our field out there, it has to be replaced. It's, it's going over ten years old now. There's the parking lot, there's roof, roofing that needs to be done. All, all of this, you know, provides a great deal of expense.
This is a discussion we can have as we move through the process of the budget and certainly-
I'm just bringing it up to, just for food for thought.
Right, and another thing to think about, I think, is that we don't have a final state aid figure, right? So, we, we know, we think we know what we're getting right now.
That's true.
But April first is not here, and, and again, and that's a, a promise of a date that we, they may not stick to either. So, we really need to go based on our estimates right now. And again, the long version of this, the line-by-line budget, it will be available tomorrow to the public and to, and for you to look at, to see what makes up the individual numbers that are here. And at that time, you know, those, those things can be looked at as well. So, moving forward, right now, in this part of the presentation, I just want to get to the bottom line. The proposed revenue, again, equal to the appropriations, fifty-eight point four million dollars for a budget-to-budget increase. This is four point seven three percent. So, I'd like to make a comment about that as well, and I'll, I mentioned it again later on in the presentation. The fact that we're bringing in one point five million dollars from debt service, that represents about two point seven percent of this revenue. And so, that revenue is our own, we already have that money. That is money that's in our reserves. It's not in our general operating reserves, it's in our debt service reserve. So, we can bring that into the general fund, but what it does is it increases, it makes the budget appear as though we're increasing four point seven three percent. What we're doing is because we have to bring that revenue in, it artificially increases the budget two point seven percent. So, you know, you're looking at really a two percent budget-to-budget increase overall from, from other sources.
And, and just to clarify to the public, that four point seven three is not the tax increase.
No.
That, that is budget-to-budget increase, and-
Correct.
The school taxes right now, approximately two point four five is what we're aiming.
Right, so the tax levy increase has nothing to do with the entire budget. That is correct.
Right, so I just want to echo some of those thoughts. The reason why it's four point seven three and not a number underneath two percent is because, one, we're bringing in debt service money to do work here at the high school, which is going to remove our need to ask taxpayers to support that same project and ask for another proposition to bond that money. And that accounts for, as Jill had mentioned, two point seven percent of that four point seven. There's other expenditures in there as well. We're hoping to partner with a community organization to offer universal pre-K services. Well, that's four hundred and ten thousand dollars that we budget for, which inflates our budget-to-budget. But the reality is, if we're able to find that partner, we get that four hundred and ten thousand dollars back from the state. So, it's off, it's offset by a revenue coming in, but obviously, the revenue doesn't show up here on the expense side of the contract. So, I just caution anyone to not see that number and jump out and think that that's a really high number because when you back out the actual expenses that are going back to the taxpayer, it's well under two percent in terms of what our actual budget-to-budget increase is from last year to this year. And it's certainly not what we're asking individuals to pay regarding the tax levy.
Good.
Okay. So, here in this slide, I wanted to, I know these were questions, I've heard them at different meetings, we talked about it last year. I thought this might be something different. Now, everyone's asking, you know, what is our cost per student? How do we compare to other school districts throughout the state? So, statewide, and now we're talking all the way to Buffalo, down to New York City, right? So, we have cost per student statewide average is twenty-three thousand four hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Putnam Valley's cost per student is twenty-five thousand nine sixteen. So, we are, I would say, in the average range. If you look at the six school districts that I have displayed up there throughout our county and neighboring school district Lakeland, which is not in our county, but certainly our neighboring school district, we are rate, you know, I would say, doing pretty good. We, ours is twenty-five thousand nine sixteen, Lakeland being just a few dollars less than us, twenty-five thousand six nineteen, which they have a large commercial big tax base in Lakeland, that supports their tax levy. So, I want to say, you know, that that's, we are the lowest out of these, you know, school districts. This information can all be found for any school district in New York by clicking on this. There is a link, oh, I didn't mean to go there, but there is a link here where they can get the public data. You go here and it brings you to any school district you want in the state, and it will give you the information that you're looking for. I can just close this, right, and it'll go away? Oh, the whole thing went away, sorry. How do I get back to it? I should have hit the back button? Is that what happened? Technology. Can't live without it, can't live with it. Thank you.
Jill, I just updated the link, so I'll take you right to that.
Oh, okay, thanks. I have instructions on the bottom on how to get to that. Thank you. Oh, I should have went down to the other slide. Okay.
Previously on?
Having a little rerun moment.
Déjà vu.
Oh, gosh. See, all these transitions, sorry. Okay, we're back where we were. So, that was the cost per student, and again, you can go to this website to see other cost per student across the state. For some reason, Brewster's is at the nineteen-twenty level because there wasn't information available for them for twenty-twenty-one, in case you're wondering why it says that. So, I did the same for taxes on an averaged valued home at four hundred thousand dollars. That seems to be the average in Putnam County right now. It's fluctuating every day, I think, it's very volatile, the, the housing market, so we don't know where that's going, right? But right now, that's what it is. And as you can see, again, Lakeland, I, I use them because they're such a close neighbor of ours. They do have the support of commercial property, much, you know, that we don't have, tremendous amount of commercial property. So, of course, the, you know, it's valued a little differently and it makes a difference on, in our tax rate. But these other surrounding towns, you can see very comparable. I know I'm always hearing that comment, oh, I live in, you know, such and such a town that's in Putnam County, and we pay so much, you know, your, our taxes are so much higher in Putnam Valley than they are there. If the home is worth what, you know, the same value, you should be paying similar taxes. I mean, we all calculate our taxes the same way. So, I don't want, I like to dispel that rumor that's out there about that. So, here, I also, and I'm not going to click on the link, but how the taxes are distributed when we calculate them, you can go there, it's a New York State link, and also how it's, how it's distributed as far as equalization rate goes and how the tax rates and tax levy data compare to other districts in, you know, in New York.
I just want to highlight one thing on this slide. If you consider the commercial properties in each of those towns and then compare them to the taxes that are paid, Lakeland and certainly Maupac would have the two greatest commercial bases. Garrison, far less than even Putnam Valley, Putnam Valley, and then Carmel, although there certainly is some commercial property in Carmel. Carmel's a pretty large, expensive district with lots of agriculture and farmland. And so, Carmel itself is also up there in terms of what they pay in their taxes. Just an observation.
So, here is, again, our three-year history on our tax rate. We're not attempting to predict that tax rate for, or project that tax rate for next year. There are too many variables right now. Last year, our equalization rate was at one oh nine point seventy-two. What that means is that whatever your, your property was valued at, by say, the assessor sends a letter out in the spring, right? So, the, the state, in OFS, the real property tax, in Albany says, they take a look at the market values. They take a look at our area where we, where we are, and they decide whether our assessments are high or low. And then, we adjust those total assessed values by what they call the equalization rate, and then we develop the rate. So, because the assessments are probably a year or so behind by the time we get to utilize the assessments, that, that equalization rate is also, has to make that adjustment, right? So, last year was at one oh nine point seventy-two. As things become more, well, things are still volatile in the market, in the market for housing. But as things become, you know, settle down now after all of that, that, that equalization rate will probably come closer to a hundred percent, assessments will change. So, I don't expect that any projection at this time using last year's equalization rate and assessments would give us a good picture of what that rate is actually going to be. And I'm going to give you an example. Last year, I did a projected rate at the presentation of the budget, and I think it was twenty-five dollars and eleven cents. We came in at twenty-two eighty-five. We came in much lower. I was proud to say that we were going to come in at twenty-five eleven because it was lower than we had been in the seven years before. But, again, we came in at twenty-two eighty-five, we didn't come in at twenty-five eleven. So, I feel like right now, during this housing market and during this post-COVID, you know, everything that's been going on with the economy and the inflation, that I wouldn't really be able to give a good projection. If I told you what it was right now, I have a feeling it's not going to come in at that level. So, let's save that for maybe the next meeting. I don't think I'm going to have any better equalization rates by then, but, you know, we can talk about it further as we go through the process. I don't, I just wanted to show what the history was, though, over the last three years. So, it's just a reminder, again, some of the things we just talked about. The total taxes levied is determined by the board to be the amount to meet the budgetary needs while remaining in the parameters of the tax cap. That's that discussion kind of that we just had, actually. The taxable assessed value of your home is determined by the assessor, not by the school district. Tax rates cannot be determined until the final taxable assessed values are set by the town assessor, and the equalization rates are set by New York State Department of Real Property Tax for all three towns. That happens in July. That's when the equalization rates come out as a final rate for us. So, even if we were to estimate what that's going to be, it's still an estimate, it's not real, okay? And I'm reminding everyone in my last bullet there to apply for all eligible tax exemptions by, by the predetermined deadlines. Again, March first, it was yesterday, I had spoken about it many times, but anyway, March first is the deadline for most exemptions, even the star exemption. And I put a link there to go to if people want to explore what those exemptions are and what they might be eligible for going forward if they didn't apply by March first. So, again, our budgetary goals are to meet state and federal requirements, meet student needs academically, socially, emotionally, and maintain, you know, safety and security at all of our facilities. This is what we're voting on. May sixteenth, there'll be a school district budget vote. On the school district ballot, there'll be four propositions. Three of them belong to the school district. Proposition number one is the budget itself. Proposition number two is, one of the trustee seats is up for election. And proposition number three, which I didn't really get into in the, in the earlier part of the presentation, but our bus borrowing plan that we, I think we adopted it about five years ago. We use the money to finance buses as we need vehicles, right? To home-to-school transportation, special transportation, vans and buses both. What, what that enables us to do when we have that bus borrowing plan in place is borrow money to buy a bus, which costs about a hundred and twenty thousand for a large bus, about seventy thousand for a small bus, and we can pay it off over five years. If we don't have the bus borrowing plan in place, and this is not for electric vehicles, none of this conversation is about electric vehicles, charging stations, any of that. We are not there, we are not there yet, we don't know when we will be there. We know when we're supposed to be there, but we're not there. This is strictly for if we need to replace one of the vehicles that we have. It allows us to pay it back over five years. If we were to have to buy a bus outright, it's a hundred, like I said, a hundred and twenty thousand for a big bus, sixty-five, seventy thousand for a small bus. Right now, we are not in need of any vehicles, we never know when that day is going to happen, right? So, if I were to have to go out and buy a bus right now, we would have to take it from reserves because our bus borrowing has been exhausted. We have about forty-five thousand dollars left there to spend, it's not enough to buy either size bus. So, this is strictly just to have available to us, and it's a legal technicality that we have to have that plan in place. It would be a proposition on the ballot.
So, I just want to emphasize that we would be asking for voter permission to have that, those monies available if needed. We're actually not even asking for permission to take any money or to borrow any money. We're really only asking for permission for the voters to allow us to have that money at the ready if it is needed to and exclusively can be used for the purchase or financing of a school bus. So, we're not actually borrowing any money, it's just permission to have money ready to borrow if needed.
And again, it allows us to have a little more predictability with the budget, right? So, if we have to make the payments, it's over five years, we know how much they're going to be over the five years to pay off the bus. It, it doesn't, it doesn't just, you know, take it away from our reserves. And also on the ballot will be the public library budget-related proposition. So, currently, and I think someone from the library is going to come and talk about that. She was here last time, Terri Raskin from the library, and told us what that was all about. We are required, as a school district, if we're asked to put their proposition on the ballot, to put it on there, we can't say no. It doesn't have any effect on our school taxes. It doesn't have any effect on our school taxes. It will be, it would be listed on the school tax bill as a separate item, but it has nothing to do with the school district's budget or its tax levy. It is a separate levy put on there by the library. And all we're doing is using the ballot as an instrument for them to get approval or disapproval for that budget. And that's why I have it listed there separately. And it will be the fourth proposition on there. If we decide to have the bus, it'll be the fourth one. If not, it will be the third. And again, just to review, our allowable tax levy is 2.5%. The proposed school tax levy in the budget is 2.45. And our proposed budget to budget change is 4.73. Again, reiterating the fact that 2.7% of that 4.73 is for the $1.5 million that we're bringing in from our own debt service reserve into our general fund budget in order to support the replacement of, partial replacement of the roof at the high school. And it inflates our budget to 4.73. It really is an important point to make because the budget to budget would be 2% increase rather than 4.7% if we weren't doing that.
And if we don't do pre-K or unable to do pre-K, it'd even be under 2%.
Correct.
Because it'd be $400,000 less.
Correct. So the budget vote is on May 16th. There are going to be four propositions at this time. We're proposing that. It is from 6:00 to 9:00, Tuesday, May 16th, at the Putnam Valley Elementary School. And absentee ballots are available. They can be requested between April 17th and May 9th. They need to be received by the district clerk by May 16th at 5:00 PM. And this is her contact information, Maureen Bolino, and that's where she can be reached. And that's it. Does anybody have any questions? Any more questions?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We talked earlier about cloning someone. I think we need to clone you.
Oh, thank you.
But thank you, it's very thorough and.
Sam, I do hear you, but we also keep in mind, this is our first time hearing this.
Oh, yeah.
And then we'll have the discussions from here, but thank you, Jill.
Along those notes, is there any additional information or any different additional slides or different information you would like us to present? Otherwise, you're going to get the same presentation next meeting.
The kindergarten number that was put up there, 75.
Yep.
What does it need to attain to keep the five sections?
I mean, that's up to us to decide, I guess. At some point, I'll make a recommendation, one way or the other. It'd be up to the board to decide. Typically, I mean, if you get to 80 students, so five more students by four sections is 20 students a class. It's a pretty large kindergarten class, even at 80 students. Certainly, if you get much above 80, we would definitely be forced to go to five sections. Because otherwise, you would have 22, 23 students in a kindergarten class. It's just too large for students that age.
I agree.
So I think in all likelihood, we'll get there to the five sections that we need. And it'll be ideal class size for those students, at least that first year. And then we could always make decisions moving forward as to whether the class drops down to four sections as the students mature.
Based upon past enrollment, over the summer, we usually gain quite a number of kids, right? People moving into the valley and stuff like that?
Right, and especially kindergarten numbers. You don't have a lot of attrition. You don't have incoming kindergarten students decide to leave. Typically, families move in to enroll their children into kindergarten. So that's a number we barely ever see go down. So I'm fairly optimistic that number will go up.
Good.
What staffing changes are included in this budget?
Well, we've had, we're not really changing any staff. We're adding, I believe, a.
So there's, we're proposing adding an E and L teacher between the elementary school and the middle school. A library clerk at the elementary school to help support that. And those are really the only two new positions that would be added. There are some new hires based upon retirement or attrition. But the two real new positions into the budget are those two, an E and L teacher and the library clerk. And that's, again, that's always subject to change over the next month plus as needs arise. We could always, special education is always a bit of an unknown if we get a bunch of students enroll. I know there's consideration regarding the possibility of hiring our own behaviorists and offsetting expenses. We contract out for that same service. So that's something that I know Natalie and I have been talking a lot about. So that is a possibility and something we may recommend by the time the budget is finalized. But we would be able to utilize our existing expenditures to justify having our own in-house person versus contracting out for those services, which is what we currently do.
And right now, we have been notified, we have two teachers retiring and six CSEA members. So that's helping us. Although we're sad to see anybody go, it has definitely helped, you know, retirements help our budget through attrition. So that's true. I mean, there were a few driving factors that we talked about in the budget. We can elaborate more on the next time as we, you know, learn more, so.
Jill, what in the appropriations, the proposed $13 million, which is a 7% increase, what's included in that number? Is that your social security Medicare as well as healthcare?
Yes, it's payroll taxes, social security Medicare, workers' compensation, unemployment insurance, healthcare.
So all that would make sense to increase as instructional student services increase because it's tied to salary.
Yeah, the pension, oh, the pensions are in there. I'm sorry, that was the last one I was trying to think of. So we have the pensions for the two units, CSEA and local retirement system and the teachers' retirement system. So those two, the social security taxes and obviously the healthcare, but those are what's driven, you know, salaries drive those two to change, yes. Do you have to announce this part or no? Okay, so we're, are we done with the budget discussion for now?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you, Jill.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think I'm on for the next one as well.
Would you like me to introduce you again?
What's that?
Would you like me to introduce you again?
You don't have to introduce me.
Now presenting.
Are we supposed to talk about the topic or are you going to introduce the topic? I don't know how this.
I think you should just keep going.
Just keep going, okay.
Yeah, payroll.
So we have a policy change that I would, we need to make happen, hopefully. So as a result of the human resources and payroll audit that we've been having, the internal audit, it was noted and which we were going to have a presentation for, I think at the next meeting or the one after that, that it was not noted in the policy here that there was an alternate person who could sign off on the payroll transaction ledger. Okay, so I was the only one who was able to sign off on that. If I'm out of the district for any reason, vacation and what have you, payroll and it still goes on.
Got it.
And the treasurer, who is now Agada Sumsky, could sign off on that as well. She's always been an alternate for that, but was never named in the policy. So my title was changed from treasurer to director of business. So now that that's happened, we had to change the titles. And that's really all this is doing, is changing the title, my title, and it's also adding her as an alternate.
Hmm, that's good.
And it's crossing one policy off her policy review list.
Yes, and it's crossing one off out of the.
It's not even half a page.
40,000 that we have to go.
Only 148 pages to go.
It's not even a full page. It's a really tiny policy.
Good.
So this is the first review. We're supposed to have two. I don't know if it's necessary.
That makes sense, though, if you're not here, what happens?
But we have to, right?
It has to be processed, yeah.
Okay. And that's it for tonight.
Okay, thank you, Jill.
Thank you, Jill.
Okay, so moving to new business. We did number one, so we're going to start with number two.
Resolved on recommendation superintendent schools to appoint Evelyn Kaliski to a probationary appointment of school monitor effective March 6, 2023. It's a probationary period of 52 weeks, March 5, 2024, at the elementary school on step one of the CSEA salary schedule. Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number three, please.
Okay. Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the resignation of teaching assistant Lorinda Coria from the district for the purpose of retirement effective the close of business on June 30, 2023, as per document 146-23 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number four, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the resignation of senior office assistant Marie Jeanette from the district for the purpose of retirement effective the close of business on June 30, 2023, as per document number 147-23 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passed. Number five, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendents of schools to accept the resignation of bus driver Charles Pataki from the district for the purpose of retirement effective the close of business on June 30, 2023, as per document number 148-23 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting. Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number six, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the resignation of bus driver Edward Robinson from the district for the purpose of retirement effective the close of business on June 30, 2023, as per document 149-23 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number seven, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the resignation of bus driver safety inspector Donna Yurks from the district for the purpose of retirement effective the close of business on September 30, 2023, as per document number 150-23 attached to the agenda and official minutes of the meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number eight, please.
Resolved on the recommendation superintendent schools to accept the resignation of lunch monitor Socorsa Gargano from the district for the purpose of retirement effective the close of business on June 30, 2023, as per document number 152-23 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting. Second.
Questions or comments?
I just want to take this opportunity to thank all our retirees for, I was trying to do the math in my head, but I'm estimating 100-plus years of service to the Putnam Valley School District for these individuals who are retiring. So as always, we thank them for their service and wish them only the best of luck in their retirement. Thank you.
And we will be celebrating them at a meeting towards the end of the school year.
Good, good.
Right, when you do them all in a row, it just, it seems like such a loss. But, you know, we wish them well and, you know, much happiness going forward.
We also have to extend the public service announcement for if anybody knows anybody who's interested in driving a school bus. Or being a lunch monitor or even an office assistant or hiring.
Well, that was my question. You had mentioned during your presentation on the budget that if we have difficulty or we aren't able to find somebody to drive our own buses, it's actually a, is it a larger expense or a similar expense? Probably a larger expense to outsource another bus to our partner, correct?
Yes.
Correct.
Who is in the same boat and also struggling to find drivers as well. So as the market changes, it costs him more to hire the drivers to fill our routes. It costs us more to hire him to hire the drivers to fill our routes. And that's sort of how the process goes. Yeah, so any bus drivers, send them our way. And we're also, we're looking at ways to entice more drivers. And we're looking for creative ways within our proposed civil service contract, moving forward our successor agreement to entice more drivers. And we're actually exploring the possibility of offering our own in-house training program for individuals that may be interested but not sure how to get started or don't have access or maybe the means to complete a training course. We're looking at ways in which we could offer that in-house, likely over the summer, whether it's our own faculty or staff members or interested community members who may want to come in and participate in that just as a way to try to get more individuals interested in those positions. So more to come on that.
And I have to say, school monitors and bus drivers can make or break a child's day. I mean, the bus drivers especially, that's the first face they see in the morning and the last in the afternoon. And if a child has a really bad bus ride, they come to school upset, they can't learn. They are so valuable, our monitors and bus drivers. And they have to know how, how much teachers and people who work in the buildings appreciate what they do, even though you don't get to see them very often or say that to them, so.
So I apologize for taking us on a tangent, but I'm not even sure we voted on that resolution yet, did we?
No, we didn't vote yet.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes.
Anyone leave so behind with no resolution? Because we get distracted by bus drivers.
Number nine.
Okay, this is an adoption amendment to income eligibility limits, whereas section 459(c) of the real property tax law provides for a partial exemption from taxation on residential property owned by qualified disabled residential owners 65 years of age. And whereas that Board of Education has previously adopted a resolution extending the exemption provisions of section 459(c) of the real property tax law, which resolution has been amended from time to time. And whereas the New York governor Kathy Hochul signed New York State Bill 3085 into law, which increases the income eligibility limits for persons qualifying for the exemption. And whereas the Board of Education desires to amend its previous resolutions to reflect the new income eligibility limits enacted under New York State Law 3085, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education does hereby amend the income eligibility limits for the partial tax exemption previously authorized pursuant to section 459(c) of the real property tax law in accordance with the schedule listed on document 142-23 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number 10, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the first reading of revisions to policy 6400 payroll procedures as per document number 145-23 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. I'd like to open it up now for public comment on any topic. Okay, not seeing any public.
Miranda's coming.
Sorry, Miranda. That's okay.
Good evening, Miranda.
Hi. Hi. You know, I don't like this thing. Anyway, my name is Miranda Zaki. I have a kindergartner and an eighth grader and a whole bunch of other spicy meatballs. So a few meetings ago, I wasn't able to make it for a couple of meetings. But I had written something because it was really important to me. And it was a discussion that was ongoing in my home with my daughter and her friends. So being forced by the acts of life circumstances, I have been the sole provider of my children financially as well as bio-psychosocially. See, I never realized until over the past two years how important sports are to my children because now it's me instead of daddy. Especially at this time, my girl and all her spicy meatball girlfriends. I watch these. I watch these girls play their many sports, my heart is in my throat of nerves, but the confidence, the empowerment they have is incredible, as observed and truly listening to them. See, Dr. Luft, administrators, and our Board of Ed, I've sat through these meetings and listened to boasts from you, pride in sports, and I see a common denominator of our girls being left out. A few meetings ago, we sat here and listened, and two of my spicy meatball girls looked over and said they didn't talk about our girls' modified volleyball team and how we are undefeated, but everything else that happened that week was spoken about. I told my daughter at that moment, get up there and talk about it. Of course, through past experiences, she wasn't, she won't talk anymore. Yet another denominator that needs to go. If you think they are not affected by silence, these girls are. They will be empowered one way or another. They can't do this without feeling equal and included. If I stand alone, I'm not afraid, I'm not afraid to say nothing. Do not leave them not included. The boys have a beautiful new locker room, someday the girls might appreciate one, too. It is up to us to help boost their self-esteem and keep them on the move of wanting to do girls' sports. We have to give them that. Modified boys' basketball got nice highlights. Girls, they don't get much. I know there's a lot going on in our district, a lot to fix, one by one, it can be done. We need to put our girls first, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other public comments? Upcoming meeting topics.
So, we can either just re-watch this meeting? So, next, next meeting, we'll go through a very similar budget presentation. Any feedback we receive from the Q and A sessions, or questions that emerge from the superintendent's listening hour prior to the next meeting, we can certainly incorporate any of those, questions that are called in or emailed in, certainly anything we could do to emphasize or answer any questions the community may have will be included, but it'll be a very similar presentation regarding the proposed budget for next meeting.
Board member comments?
I just want to say two things. Number one, Barbara, I didn't mean to jump on you before, and I apologize for doing that.
Oh, no. Don't tell her, Sam.
Budgets always, you know.
Sam, we're not used to someone saying to raise it, so.
Well, I didn't like my quick response on that, and I apologize for it, I'll try to rein that in, but also, I just want to commend all these individuals who are retiring. I think of somebody like Donna Yerkes, who I knew as a kid, you know, here and gone through the system all the way up to the top, and so many, Marie Janette was my administrative assistant when I was assistant principal here, and there's so many good people who are retiring, SO and Gargano and Charlie Pataki, and all, all of them, every single one of them are just outstanding, and they're going to leave a hole in the district, and you're right, Dr. Luft, that it's going to be tough to replace them, and not only, not only getting a body there, but a body that cares as much as these individuals have cared about the district, and they have, they sleep this district, and they always gave their hundred percent. They're going to be greatly missed.
I just want to again note that the library proposition being on the ballot, we do not have a vote in that, it's, it's going to be, it's not our say, it's a done deal, so I just want to again state that, because I've had a lot of comments this week, why are we doing that? And it's not a choice that we made, it's, it's a regulation that we must follow.
Yeah, the, I mean, I've learned a lot about it this, in the last couple of weeks. One, the library is under the auspices of the New York State Department of Education, and, you know, this is, and they're partners, I mean, with us in lots of ways. They, they make sure they have the books that our students need, that they have programs that support our students and our families, but, and, so this is, you know, a way of helping them by responding to their requests, but nothing that the library does is controlled by the school, we, we don't, we don't talk about their funding, we don't talk about their program decisions, like, none of that. The library is still completely separate, it's just that their proposition is going to be presented at the same time our budget propositions are presented.
And if anybody wants to investigate the situation of the school and the library with this proposition, Maholpak School District and their library works the same way, they went before the public, put the proposition on the back of their school budget vote, and it passed, and they built that, you know, beautiful building there years ago, but they can give you the whole history of the ins and outs of that, if anybody's interested. And you're absolutely right, Barbara, we, we have no role in this, we have no choice in this. We have to put that proposition on our ballot by law and let the people decide.
And it was like six years ago that Garrison?
Four, I think Garrison did, just before the pandemic.
That's right.
So, you know, most, many of the libraries in the region, most libraries in the region are self-sustaining and not being, get a contract with the town to get their budget, and that's, that's what this is.
Very rare.
Right.
Very rare, Putnam Valley, yeah.
Okay.
I wanted to, to, to say, the error of omission is a real thing, and it's really hard to always remember everything that needs to be celebrated. I've never, I, and I guess just my presumption has always been, I never even think about modified sports as far as reporting them out, because when my kids are going through modified, it's like, they're just doing it. I mean, I never thought of it as competitive in any real way, so that's a, that's a mea culpa, as far as, because, you know, you, when, when it's the high school sports, it's usually, you're thinking about wins, it's all about win, so that error of omission, I apologize, but I think we should, we could do a better job on, on bringing that to the forefront and maybe a little more effort on some of the unseen things that, you know, we try and catch them all, but we had to probably do a better job.
Along with that, I think our students do a great job of saying what's happening within the high school and the activities, but I think also, there's an opportunity for just even more information, especially at the elementary school level, any activities, for example, the PTA has going on, or the plays that are going up. We hear a lot about the high school, and we just have, always have to remember there's three schools.
Okay, on a lighter note, I, this week.
There's always great things going on, that's fine.
This week is lobby week in Albany. I was supposed to go up Tuesday, and hadn't quite figured out how I was going to work it out, and then it snowed, so they did, they went virtual, but we did speak to many senators and assembly people, but, by, on Zoom or Google Meet. Tomorrow, I have also all-day virtual meetings, well, from like nine to three, so just to, just to know that, you know, that our, what's happening in our district is represented to our assembly people in Albany. I'm taking a civics learning class on next week. Democracy Ready New York is discussing the need for civics education with Dr. Richard Haas, who's counsel on the Foreign Relations Council, so it should be really interesting. So, yeah, I'll see what I can learn this, this week coming up. Anyway, that's it. Anything else?
Oh, no, just, just a couple of things. One, I wanted to mention the March 8 date again for the school budget, you know, discussion that we're going to have at the Putnam Valley Middle School at 1:30 in the afternoon, so I want to invite as many people to come out and either educate themselves or ask questions from us. I'm not going there with a presentation again, we're going to try the same approach that we did last year, where we would like to hear from people on the outside and know what their questions are, so that we can understand what people don't understand and help them understand it. Secondly, you mentioned lobbying and people, meeting with Lower Hudson Association of School Business Officials, as, as one of those members, I attended also last week, we had discussions with local, you know, representatives to try and get, you know, give, tell them, you know, what our challenges are as school business officials, some of the things we discussed, you know, like the pre-K and how it affects the downstate people differently than the upstate people, and how, you know, school districts and how that is quite different for us all, and that they need to come to that realization, talked about capital planning and things like that, going back up this weekend, there is, in Albany, to do that again, as I sit on the board of the Lower Hudson Business Officials, and I've been invited to go to, that's, I'll be doing that Sunday and Monday, and we're meeting again with them, legislators, on Monday. So, if there's anything that, you know, we want to bring to them, obviously, we can, it's a, it's a discussion of a small group of people, so it's a, it's likely that, you know, what we have to say will be heard at least, and not just there as an audience, so I want people to know that we're doing that, and we're, we're listening to them, and they're listening to us.
So I know that you, you kind of mentioned it, we talked also about sustainability and about, I mean, there's the whole electric bus.
Right, that whole challenge.
That's a silo in and of itself, but, but the infrastructure of many of our school buildings that are aging and need new boilers, new windows, retrofitting, whatever, and there isn't a lot of state support for those kind of projects, so I think that, and I think they've heard that many times, I don't think they can hear it enough, so that they're aware of, of, you know, that that is a significant challenge for many of the school districts in our area. In fact, one of the, a couple of the superintendents, they were talking about trying to use solar, and either they don't have the space for fields, or their buildings, or the roofs won't support the solar, or they don't, the buildings are facing the wrong way, and, you know, and they're trying to be, reduce their carbon footprint, and they're trying to be responsible, but it's, we're in an impossible situation if you're in the middle of White Plains, or even in Putnam Valley, so I think that that's, I'm glad you're going, and I think that it's a, it's a good thing that our elected officials hear the things that are, you know, concerning us, so.
Thank you.
Oh, Jackie.
I just wanted to quickly mention, Dr. Luft earlier spoke to the communications work we've been doing as a district, and one of the things that I wanted to make sure I recognized was the team behind those communications. It's, definitely takes a village to make that work, and I want to commend Dana Lopez and Jeannie Denneig first and foremost for the ideas they bring to me, the HR corner that Dana submits to me every month for our Curriculum and Instruction newsletter. Jeannie Denneig is tireless in making sure parents know about our parent evenings, in getting the publications of that out there, and helping the newsletter come together, and Maureen Bellino, our own Maureen Bellino, has an eagle eye for editing, so that newsletter does not leave the station without her looking at it first. And beyond that, our teachers, our principals are also tireless in offering these after these evening events, and even some of the other material that goes into the newsletters that we're offering, some of them will write stories for me, send pictures to me, so that they make sure student information is highlighted, so I just wanted to make sure I made the board aware of just how many people are involved in all of the communications we're putting out there every, every month.
Well, we were hoping you weren't doing it all, because that would mean you weren't sleeping.
You need to be close.
It would be very serious. Okay, I'd like a motion to move into executive session for one matter of collective negotiations.
Subvoed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
There will be no business conducted afterwards. Good evening, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.